I'd like to call this evening's Planning Commission. The city agreed to order if there's anybody present on the commission who would need to disqualify themselves. From the cases being reviewed this evening, please state your name and case for the record and complete a recusal form from staff. Can we see have anybody? So at this time, at the time of the case voted on, person just need to step down from the panel. First order of business, we will now elect a vice chair for the remainder of 2024.
I move we elect Walden Jones.
This is vice chair. This is vice chair.
Vice chair.
At this point, we'd like to have a nomination for vice chair.
Who's the chair?
I've moved into the chair, I guess.
The vice chair moved up to the chair.
Well, that wasn't stated.
Well, I just nominated, I nominated him to be chair.
What do we do first?
Chair.
So because Walden was vice chair and he agreed to serve as chair.
We don't have to vote.
You don't have to vote on chair, but you will have to vote on a vice chair to replace Mr. Jones since he is now the chair.
If we were to argue, maybe I would challenge this parliamentary procedures, but I'm not. This is just what I wanted to happen anyway.
I did ask Tammy. She, she agreed.
Who's this? We have a nomination? Ryan?
I'll nominate myself if nobody's gonna do it.
I'll live with that.
I'll nominate you.
Second.
I'll nominate you, Ryan.
Fair enough.
All right. So we have a second.
We can now.
Call for vote.
Who's the second? Y'all are wild tonight.
Paul was the second.
All right, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asurno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Hmm, yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. All right, congratulations.
Close vote.
All right, so now we'll move on to the public hearing. Goodness, time, we will hear, we will open and close a public hearing for each request. We will start with the staff giving the basic information for the requests and the applicant presenting their request. Afterwards, anyone wishing to speak for or against the request will do so and also have the opportunity. All speakers should come to the podium to make the comments, beginning with your name and address. If you have not already signed in, please sign in for the staff to speak. Okay, so at this time, we will open the public hearing for AN 24-04. Staff?
This is docket number AN 24-04. The address is Hood Road. The parcel ID number is G 006 000 301105. The existing zoning is unzoned Greenville County and the request is to annex and zone to manufacturing and logistics with the intent of building a fire and police training facility. Here's the aerial of the parcel. Here's the zoning map. The subject parcel is currently Greenville County. The surrounding parcels in purple are zoned manufacturing and logistics. Here's the future land use map. The future land use in gray is manufacturing and logistics. Here's a photo of existing conditions at the site, and that completes my presentation.
All right. Is anybody from the city present? All right. What would you like to tell us about the project?
I don't have much to add, so the parcel that it's going to be combined with, as you can see, is already an existing fire station. So they will be knocking down the large training facility on the left and then building a new, much larger, training facility for both police and fire. It will have room for training, as well as like classroom training, too.
Okay. All right, apparently, we don't have anybody signed up to speak, but I will ask the crowd, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on or against this project? Seeing none, close the public hearing for AN 24-04. At this time, we will open the public hearing for AN 24-05.
This is docket number AN 24-05. The address is Highway 101 and Reedville Road. The parcel ID numbers are 5-35-00-079.01, The existing zoning is unzoned Spartanburg County and the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor with the intent of building a gas station and car wash. Here's the aerial of the three parcels. Here's the zoning map. The surrounding zoning for the parcels in purple are manufacturing and logistics. That is not correct. I believe it's commercial corridor. Here's the future land use map. It is suburban neighborhood in yellow. The green dot designates a neighborhood center and the purple line designates a transitional corridor. Here is a photo of the existing conditions at the three parcels. That completes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Thank you. You mind coming up forward and stating your name and address?
My name is Greg Minton, 309 Ellington Creek Lane, Greer, South Carolina. But I'm with the Spinks Company and obviously, this is our project, but we're excited about bringing in these three parcels. This is gonna be part of a larger develop, we hope, in the future. We've been working with the surrounding property owner that owns the remaining acreage around us, but we're bringing these two, three parcels in and we'll work in conjunction with the surrounding property owners as we build this to create all the DOT access that will serve the entire acreage as part of our developments. We've been working with them to coordinate our plans with DOT and also with the, for their future development plans. But we'll have our tunnel car wash and our Spinks gas station will be on the three parcels. The two parcels that are shown will be where the car wash is and then the smaller parcel towards the center of the property will be where the gas station is located.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on or behalf or against this project? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for AN 24-05. At this time, we will open the public hearing for RZ 24-07.
This is docket number RZ 24-07. The address is Highland Street. The parcel ID numbers are T 009 04 02 03 800 and the remaining three share the same prefix, but different last four digits. So 3900, 4000, and 4100. The existing zoning is commercial corridor and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial of the site. The parcels in purple are zoned commercial corridor and the gray is unzoned Greenville County. The future land use is suburban commercial. Here's a photo of existing conditions at the four parcels, and that completes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Good evening, Michael Roth, 26 Elmsley Road, Greenville, South Carolina. Looking to bring in these four lots from commercial to a residential use for single-family attached and detached product. If you could tell from the maps, these four lots are accessed off of Highland. I believe this is leftover land from the Panera Bread or McAllister, McAllister Development that was on 29. And so you cannot access from 29. So there's a, probably a 20-foot retaining wall there. So it makes sense to bring it to residential. This fits the surrounding land use, the, everything around on Highland Street's residential, and that's, that's what I'm asking for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone present to speak against or for this project? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing for RZ 24-07. At this point, we will now move into the new business portion of the meeting. This is where staff will make the official recommendation on each item. If the commission has any questions, so the applicant staff or anyone in the audience is within their right to ask those questions. The board will vote on each request during this time. After the commission has voted on your case, please contact planning and zoning staff for further recommendations. At this time, I will open up the business meeting for AN 24-04.
Once again, this is AN 24-04. The address is Hood Road. The existing zoning is unzoned Greenville County and the request is to annex and zone to manufacturing and logistics. Here's the aerial. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. Here's the photo of existing conditions. Once again, the request is to annex and zone to manufacturing and logistics for a police and fire training facility. The surrounding zoning is mostly industrial and staff recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Any questions, comments, motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a session.
All right, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asurno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. The motion passes, please contact the staff for next steps. All right, at this time, we will open up the business meeting, well, excuse me. We open up the business meeting for AN 24-05.
This is AN 24-05. The address is Highway 101 and Reedville Road and the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. Here's the aerial of the parcels. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. This is the existing conditions. Once again, the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor with the intent of creating a gas station and car wash. The surrounding zoning is commercial corridor or vacant. Staff recommend approval.
All right, thank you.
So move. He's wanting to get down there.
Well, I guess, is there any questions or comments, the staff or the applicant? If not, I guess.
What was the, what was the void space between the two? There's a, so there's three lots there, there's a, there's a pathway or a right-of-way? What is that between the three lots?
So there's actually a larger commercial parcel that will be developed here in the rear and they will share access here and here and up here. So they're going to develop the access here as part of their, their site.
Okay.
Is that another parcel that's just not in the, annexed into the city?
Yes, that's actually owned by a bank. So that'll probably come in and, as an out parcel at some point.
Ms. Jones, I think you did make a motion, didn't you?
I did and it failed.
It failed.
I'll second Ms. Jones' motion to approve.
All right, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asurno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. If this motion passes, please contact staff for next steps. At this time, we will open up the business meeting for RZ 24-07.
This is RZ 24-07. The address is Highland Street. The existing zoning is commercial corridor and the request is to rezone to traditional neighborhood. Here's the aerial. Here's the zoning map. Here's the future land use. This is the photo of existing conditions. Once again, the request is to annex and zone to commercial corridor. The surrounding land uses range from commercial to residential and staff recommend approval.
All right. Is there any discussion, questions for the applicant or staff?
Is that one, that's one parcel or that's four separate parcels? Four separate parcels?
Four separate parcels.
And each parcel's, I guess, is the plan to put houses on each one of them?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And they're wide, they're wide enough to do that?
Yeah, they're 50 feet wide.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's an acre in total, so they're about 50 feet wide and they're, they're fairly deep parcels.
Yeah, okay.
Questions, comments, motions?
How many houses are you gonna put in each parcel?
It's a good question. I'm not sure yet. So the density that we're asking for, traditional neighborhood allows for single-family attached and detached. I think it's no more than 10 per acre, if I'm correct. So you can't, based off that, we can't do more than 10, but I think with the lot lines, you can't really do that anyways. So I mean, we're toying between just a single-family home, which is what we might just do or we may do a duplex or maybe a single-family home with an ADU. We're not sure yet. They would, they would be for sale product, though.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, motions, discussion?
So moved.
We have a motion? We have a second?
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asurno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, contact staff for next steps. All right, at this time, we will open up a business meeting for PP 24-03.
This is PP 24-03. The address is Kissed Road. The parcel ID number is 5-35-00-038.00 This is a preliminary plat approval request. So Hickory Ridge is a 99-unit, single-family detached subdivision located off Kissed Road. The project meets all applicable regulations with two different lot sizes throughout the development. 11.95 acres of open space with both active and passive amenities. Staff recommends approval.
All right.
How do you get in here?
I assume the applicant's here. Any questions, discussion for the applicant or staff? What is the, what is the average lot size? Are the, you said there's two different lot sizes?
There's two different lot sizes. So one is a 75 to 10,000 square foot lot and the other is a 5,000 to 7,500 square foot lot.
Two car garages?
Yes.
If you'd like to come up and introduce yourselves, you can.
You got, how much room you got behind those garages before you get to the sidewalk?
So Nicholas Myers, Pulte Holmes, I'm the builder, and then we've got Dalton Brubge.
I'm representing Seaman and Whiteside today, engineering firm.
How much room you got behind, between the garage and the street or the garage and the sidewalk?
There's a 20-foot.
Building setback.
So you'll have 20 feet from the building.
What I like to hear is start.
And the drive ways are approximately 16 feet wide, so you'll probably have around 20 feet of entry to the garage.
So you can get two cars, 'cause the garage's gonna be full of junk.
Two car garage, yes, sir.
Full of stuff. Other than cars, but anyway, all right.
What are the amenities that we're providing for this neighborhood?
Pool, cabana, playground, fire pit.
It's down in the bottom here.
It's, it's down here by the existing creek that's on site.
There's swimming pool.
I just said swimming pool.
Oh.
He said yes.
Got one, okay.
And at the bottom, just see my shaky hand.
And I know you listed the, the address, but what, what is this near in relation to what?
It's directly adjacent to Chestnut Grove, which is a marriage community on Kissed Road. On the top, right?
Is this the site that the school originally came in at?
It is. So this is just north of Reedville Road, southernmost part of the city.
How many units is it gonna be?
99.
Had an annexation a couple of months ago.
They could have built more, so, you know, we had all the people here objecting, but then they got happy.
Yep. I think that was the biggest concern for some of the folks that I've talked with, was the number of units, so I'm glad you honored that.
First, they were complaining because it was a school. They wanted houses, then they got houses and they were complaining.
How do you enter this neighborhood and I just, I'm just?
Say that again?
There's, there's a road, it's, there's a road down the middle. Yeah.
But that's Kissed.
Yeah, it's 75% on one side and.
I keep forgetting that.
Does DOT require any road improvements, I guess, turn lanes, I reckon, or?
There are, and then we've got, I believe, some widening to do on Cox Road as well.
Yeah, that's the main DOT, not issue, but needs to be resolved. As you can see, it shows, it's a hatch, you can barely see it from this scale, but Cox will be expanded on the property side, but not adjacent. So it'll just increase on the property owner's side of it.
Is Cox Road a county road?
It is, and it's also, we also do have a turn lane on Kissed as well.
It's actually ours now. We annexed it with the site.
And both Kiss and Cox will have sidewalk connections along the road.
All right.
When I was on Kissed Road, it was awfully narrow. So are we doing anything about the size of the road?
I think they've actually repaved that here recently and added a foot on each side, the county did.
County actually did a repaving recently and they widened it just a little bit on both sides. So it's a little more generous now. It doesn't feel quite so narrow.
Okay. Comments, questions, discussions, motions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Asurno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. Motion passes, contact planning staff for next steps. Thank you. That concludes our new business portion of the meeting. Now we go into other business, planning and staff report.
Heather's gonna pull up our, update on our planning advisory committee cases. But while she's doing that, I'd just like to welcome Ms. Medford to the planning commission. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
We, we, Mr. Holland didn't get to have a last meeting after he announced that he wouldn't be returning since we didn't meet last month, but we certainly, just for the record, want to thank him for his service and I believe council will be doing a recognition of him as well. But welcome to the group, happy to have you and.
I, I would like to go back, I did miss the meeting minutes.
I was just gonna let it slide, but you can if you want.
After we get done with the pla, staff planning, we can get to that.
We're just gonna vote on both of them next meeting.
She does roll through.
She was gonna let you go home. Okay, so these are all of our planning advisory committee cases between April to the end of June of this year. So I won't read through all of this. We just saw this one, it's the fire and police training facility. You just saw their annexation application, they've already been through PAC and showed us the site. So here it is, you can see, they have this big building right here that will be the majority of their training facility and then I think one of these is gonna be a new, like, training building, so they may burn stuff in it and practice and I think one of them might be storage. Maybe it's also a training. So that's what the site will look like. All right, so the next one is the basketball courts at Stevens Field. So these are the basketball courts that they'll be moving from Victor Gym where they currently are and they're moving them down the road to Stevens Field. So here's the aerial.
Oh, I was just gonna use the little.
So they'll be putting them at the front of the site, close to North Line, right there. You can see the, the Legion is staying.
Are these indoor or outdoor?
These are outdoor courts. It's two courts, they're gonna build some parking. They're gonna add in some sidewalk on Snow Street, hopefully. And the American Legion will actually have a really nice little parking area. So. If you guys have any questions, you're welcome to interrupt. So this one is, I, you, I believe you may have seen this before. This is actually in the Highway 101 Reedville Road area. It is 84 townhome units. This previously was apartments, but with the UDO, they were able to change to townhomes by right when apartments didn't work out. So this is just south of where Spinks will be. Spinks is, so this is Reedville Road and Spinks is like up here in like one of these parcels. So here's the site that we saw at PAC. I think they may be sticking with this, this design. They'll have two commercial out parcels over here and all the townhomes.
Where's the sewer for that property?
It's coming right down 101. Like, it's right off the back of 101.
What development's bringing it down 101?
I guess it's.
There's something further south, going toward Woodruff?
It's not coming from the south, it's coming from the north, as I understand it.
I'm honestly not sure, Waverly.
That's not even CPW, is it? Sewer.
Talked to us about easements. With those two out parcels, they've been coordinating with them, but beyond that, I'm not certain.
So this looks like it backs up to that neighborhood that was just approved.
No.
This is actually in a.
It's close to it.
No, that, here's Kiss Road right here, this is, it's further north.
Okay. But when we're done, I'll pull up GIS and we can look at where all these parcels are.
This is Kiss Road. So it's a couple miles.
So this is Woods Mortuary Crematory. They are subdividing a portion of their memorial gardens off of Gap Creek Road and they're building a crematory on the site. So it's actually, so they kinda did a giant flag lot, but they ended up, they're gonna connect to one of their existing roads and it'll be in this, this area right here. So it'll be way back on the site.
That already came to us once.
Yes, I think for rezoning this little portion that they did.
Why does it have to be on a separate lot? Is that just what they want?
It's actually zoned residential right now.
Which did not allow a crematory, so.
Yeah, so we had to zone commercial corridor, which is, it is all along Wade Hampton to the north, so. But that's it, they, they're working on getting their plan review in.
They move really fast on those projects, haven't they?
Yeah, so here is the.
Let me burn a hole in the park.
The parking garage. Here is, this doesn't show both parcels. This, this actually includes this parcel as well. This is off of Trade, just Orient. And here you can see.
How many cars, how many lot, cars is that, parking lot?
I'm not exactly sure, 'cause we didn't see all the layers. Do you remember?
I wanna say it's, it's close to 500 spaces.
What is the existing one that built, was built?
I think 385.
It'll be bigger.
Whoever would've thought Greer would need one, which was two.
So we still have some access issues to work out with adjacent parcels, but for the most part.
What's there right now?
Parking lot.
Right now, it's like a parking lot and the old gun store, that's right there.
Okay, all right, yep.
Yeah, so this one, yes, it needs a little more work. Okay, so this is off of Town Center Drive, Interested Industries. Interested Industries Home Improvement Retail. So they actually are going to subdivide off a portion of this site. And I think, were they going to take a piece of this one as well?
This is behind the Bank of Travelers Rest and all that.
Yeah, so Target's across the street. And then this is like Vitamin Shop, I think.
Fuddruckers and all that right there.
Right, exactly. Yep, that's right back there. So this is the site that they have. It's part showroom and then some warehouse type storage.
Industries facility. What does that mean?
I honestly tried to Google it and I couldn't find it.
Is that actually a name, a true name of?
It might be like a shell name. But it's supposed to, I don't know, did they describe the business?
Yeah, it's like flooring, counter tile. Like, basically, they're going to demo some rooms in the front and then the back will have, you know, slabs of things. So it's more like a showroom.
Showroom, okay.
So, so this is off Brushy Creek. This is, oh, this is the Brushy Creek Towns Commercial Out Parcel. So this is the other side that they were planning to develop into commercial. This is the Suds Laundry, is that right?
Yeah, Green Laundry Lounge.
Oh, okay. That's the Spinks across the street right there.
There's a gym there. So this is their development proposal. And you can see they have an amenity there on the side and a little trail or sidewalk for the residents. And, and very interesting parking lot.
Very inefficient.
It's something. So that's it. That's our last site. I will save what we saw recently in July for the next time in three months.
Is the, the Chase Bank going on, like, I guess, kind of across the street from Five Guys? Is that in the city?
Yeah, it's currently grading.
Yeah. All right.
They came.
Due to me not following the agenda, I'm going to go back and ask if we received the minutes from last meeting on April 15, 2024. Trust everyone.
They were fine minutes. I moved to approve.
All right.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Osorno?
Yes.
Ms. Medford?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes. All right.
Real quick, before we adjourn, just to orient you guys. So this is Highway 101. This is the townhome parcel that we just saw from PAC. These are the Spinks parcels right here. Reedville Road, the Kissed Reedville intersection. And then this is the preliminary plat that we saw tonight are these two parcels.
Okay.
And this is Chestnut Grove up here, which I'm going to call on every single one, so.
That's a lot going on that one.
It's the bottom.
Little area, they have a lot of construction going.
Right.
The new Greer. So any, any thing you can disclose or let us know about that other parcel that's kind of wrapped around the Spinks?
It's all speculative at this point, but my understanding is that they've always had kind of a retail strip with a potential grocery store anchor.
Yeah.
As their plan. But we have not seen any, any plan review or, or layout for it.
And that's, that story exists, I mean, it's the same thing they've been saying since they first came before us well over a year ago.
Yeah, Spinks came for an annexation. They started the process and then they let it expire. I think they were trying to work out cross-access with the other parcel and DOT. But it seems like they've gotten it together now. Because we have it going to PAC.
Uh, this.
The 25th, right?
This next pack, yeah.
So it'll be coming to PAC next.
Next week, next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So it seems like they've kind of worked out some of their kinks and it's going to move forward this time.
They're moving very quick.
Feel much better.
I got, well, it doesn't have to be an official question. We need some training videos.
Okay.
I still got the last one you said, I could watch some of them. But I thought I'd give you an opportunity to.
Yep, we are halfway through the year, so.
Someone's still in offering a trainer.
She's way behind. Don't worry, you get like 18 months.
All right, that's everything. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.